All right, thank you Natasha. Welcome everyone to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. It is December 19th, it's 4:00 PM. I will call the meeting to order and please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it is hand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I did address the crowd before the meeting started regarding public comments and I wanted to make sure that everyone understood. Because we've gotten some, I've gotten some criticism recently regarding some of the public comments and in the way the meetings have gone. So, it was pointed out to me that our agenda clearly states, under the public comments, it's the very last line, "Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker." That's what our agenda says. And what's been happening recently is people have been coming in and it started out with people filling out two public comments. They would comment on one section and then another section of the agenda and now people are filling out three and so on. And then the other thing that was happening is people were coming to the meetings and they would bring some friends with them, they would fill out public speaking cards with no intention to talk and then they would transfer the time over to the other individual. So, I want to be clear on the rules of the public comment card. In the very top it says, at the very bottom of line one, "You may not donate time to others." And on the agenda it says, "Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. We welcome your comments. You have three minutes. You can speak on a topic on the agenda or you can speak in public comments, whatever you prefer." But you get three minutes. So, I wanted to be very clear on that. All right, that being said, we will move on to Agenda Item Two, which is Amendment and Approval of the Agenda.
I met with the clerk today. She requested the removal of Discussion Action Item B.
So, your request is to remove B, which is ARP money request?
Uh huh.
Okay.
I have none.
None, John?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A second.
All right, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And yes, motion passed, it's three to zero. All right. Next up is a presentation and this is a five-year presentation from the clerk's office. Shelley?
Shelley Denny County Clerk, and I'm here to present Marcy Brosie with a five-year of service certificate. I'm very thankful to have Marcy. She always shows up with a smile on her face even after the last six months of, it's been pretty tough in our office with budget cuts and I appreciate all her hard work and commitment to the public.
Thank you. It's been great working with you and Renee.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you, Marcy. Always has a smile on her face, absolutely.
I teased her and said I was gonna make her say a speech, but she said, "I better not." So, I better not.
All right, now we move-
Her brother was one of my best friends in high school, so-
Really?
He might come back and kick the crap out of me if I tease his sister, so.
Now, we'll move to public comments. And before we do public comments, I want to point out to the people watching and the people listening, that this is an opportunity for the public to speak. They have three minutes to do so, as I explained. I want to caution the public that's listening because this is an opportunity for people to literally step up to that microphone and say whatever they want. Oftentimes, people step up and say misinformation. They say things that haven't been verified or vetted and sometimes create a perception that is not true and accurate. So, for those watching and those listening at home, I would encourage you that as you hear information, before you jump on social media, before you make accusations and point fingers, please verify and do your own homework on the statements that are made before you react to it. So, public comments, first up is Michelle Martin.
Hi, I'm Michelle Martin. I've been a Curry County citizen for almost 60 years. The absurd contract that the BOC will vote on tonight to secure their services for Financial Director Kena Wolfe for the next five years. By rough calculations, this contract has a total value of $800,000. This Kena is guaranteed a minimum of $130,000 a year. I don't know her current salary, but at salary of $130,000, she will get a 3.2 COLA raise each year, which will bring her yearly salary to $134,000 in two years. $138,000 in three, $143,000 in four, and $147,000 in five. Please check the amount, but it is approximately $692,000 on the calculator. And if her current salary is more than $130,000, those numbers will be higher. Add in $15,000 a year for professional development, which is training and is more than an annual training budget for the entire sheriff's office for over five years. That is $75,000. Lastly, she gets $500 a month, $6,000 a year to travel to the office the one week a month she is required to be here. The calculator adds this all up around $797,000 without including step increases. Looking at the contract itself, there are huge issues with Section 2.2, Time Devoted to Work, which states only time necessary to, it does not require a 40-hour work week. It seems that even though they are all from Brookings, the commissioners and council are not learning the mistakes that were made in the Janelle Howard incident in abiding the county with the next contract. Didn't Brad quit the city council over that before he got recalled? I urge you to listen and act now as our county faces a critical financial crisis that could lead to bankruptcy jeopardizing essential services such as the sheriff's office and jail. Despite this looming threat, significant payments continue, nearly $1 million allocated to Kena over the next five years, whether she is still employed or not. Our county cannot afford this ridiculous contract. Who has ever heard of such a contract like that? Your participation is vital. We must reunite to prevent further deterioration of our community. If we do not take action against these issues, our county may face irreversible damage. Secondly, there is a critical meeting that will be held in Coquille at 10:00 AM on Friday regarding our jail tomorrow. This will include Couste County BOC members and Curry County BOC members. This meeting is in regards to discussion over jail services between Couste and Curry Counties. This will secure Couste County's jail and the jobs of their deputies while it shuts down our jail. You guys should be ashamed.
And I take my votes back.
So, Michelle, just one record-setting fact there, I did not get recalled as a city councillor.
I didn't say you did, I said before you got recalled.
And I also did not support retaining Janelle Howard as a city manager. I voted against that with John McKinney. But, thank you. Next up is Georgia Cockerham.
I'm here to request transparency from this board about the ongoing elimination of safety in Curry County. Within the past few months, your decisions have destroyed the livelihood of at least 11 deputies. You've interfered with the operations of the sheriff's office demanding access to computers, giving away cars, and now planning on closing the jail and paying Couste County to house Curry County criminals. All of this without providing a detailed explanation to the citizens as to why you are taking these actions without input from the community. Mr. Alcorn warns you not to simply believe what you hear from this podium. Now, I warn the public not to believe what you hear from the commissioners, but rather to pay attention to their actions, which are 180 degrees different from the words they speak. I'm surprised, Mr. Trosse, that you have gone along with defunding Curry County law enforcement and dismantling the sheriff's office without first disclosing to the public a plan to back up your claim that safety is of primary importance. Mr. Alcorn has nothing to lose in all of this, but you own a restaurant in Harbor, The Fat Irish. Mr. Alcorn, you have repeatedly suggested that you have a plan for Curry County law enforcement, even going so far as stating in June, and I quote, "I'm also looking at other ways to re-envision public safety in Curry County and what that might look like," end quote. And then in October, you responded to a question about your plan by stating, and I quote, "What I can tell you is that regarding consolidation, I am exploring every option, narrowing those options down, and I've been having conversations with our police departments regarding that and actually have made some pretty good progress towards that," end quote. You have, Mr. Alcorn, main references to your law enforcement background, to your leadership in your leadership role with the BOC. You suggested that you've created your own plans for redesigning the structure of the sheriff's office, even venturing into what is presently a rather vague consolidation plan that would affect all law enforcement agencies as well as all Curry County residents. If you expect citizens to follow you into the uncharted waters of restructuring or consolidation of our vital public safety systems, you owe them a convincing statement of your expertise, proof that they are following not just a 33-year line-level police officer, but a genuine expert in all aspects of public safety and law enforcement. For the benefit of the citizens of this county, I'm asking you to please describe the credentials that establish you as a law enforcement expert, not just in the tactical areas of patrol or SWAT, but rather in the strategic, big picture, beyond officer, deputy, detective work. Citizens will want you to detail your education, training, and experience at the executive leadership and command levels, those levels that live and breathe professional strategic planning. You owe it to the citizens of this county to convince us that you possess the qualifications to define, plan, and shape the future of law enforcement systems in Curry County. Please convince us now.
Next up is Andre Bay.
I was gonna speak on item number seven, since I can't do the other ones.
What's that?
I just wanna speak on item number seven now. He said we only get three minutes, that's all.
Okay, so you wanna wait for seven?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Seven eight.
Got it. Mark Nast.
Well, after hearing Georgia's little speech, I have to amend to some limited extent the fact that she was providing some information that I was completely unaware of. Having said that, I really applaud the actions, generally applaud the actions and the efforts of the BOC, the Budget Committee and the Budget Committee, in attempting to resolve a decades-old problem. And it's not just law enforcement, okay? I do have, I do have serious problems with the amount of time that was wasted by the BOC in addressing an issue that I feel is more appropriately managed in an executive session, or something akin to an executive session. And I'm referring in specific to the editorial and the response to the editorial from the Teamsters Union. And I say the Teamsters Union because I have no idea who that person is. I have really no idea. All I know was that he used the word "the union" and "the Teamsters" and "representative" several times, all right? And I, and I really had a problem with the editorial. But I also have a problem with the fact that the BOC had to waste a whole bunch of time in order to come up with a response, okay? Cutting off one's nose to spite one's face is not an effective method of finding a solution to a problem. I am personally perfectly capable of cutting my nose off to spite my face. However, I think that some of the actions that have been ongoing recently, since the failure of the levy, that some of those actions are individuals cutting their nose off to spite their face and not willing to engage with the BOC in an effective fashion. And, but I do applaud several people that I can see in the audience here that I respect and have a lot of respect for, who have tried to engage with the BOC and have tried to provide solutions and whatnot. And I really think that is the most appropriate way to go forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Chris Bash.
Thanks for hearing me. I'm just basically here, Brad, thanks for seeing me the other day. I just, I needed to get the 805 signed so that I can get the account open, the accounts open through Orstar and all that. So, I was just wondering if we could do that even, I brought one with me, if we could just have counsel. I'm sure you've all read it.
I spoke to him after we spoke, Chris, and he's been working on it and I have one here, so.
I submitted it to Shelley for review, so, the one I wrote, so.
Can't we just use this one?
No.
It's our levy.
I know, but I have to sign it. So, no, I write it. That's the way it goes.
So, we have one.
Yeah, so after I spoke to you, I know it's important for you to open the Orstar account, you need that done, so I asked Ted to get it done as soon as possible and that happened, so.
All right. The only other thing I'd like to say is, I know you guys are gonna talk to them up there about the jail. You guys know the problems at our jail. That jail closes, it will never reopen. It will be condemned. There's so much problems over there. If you lose the permits on it now, it will never reopen, no matter how much money we get, without a new one. If you go back and look at all the things at Medford, I forget the name of the company that was looking into building a new jail and, you know, we're trying to get the state grant and all that stuff on, that's what their, all their people came in and said, "If this jail ever closes, it'll never reopen, it'll condemn it." It will doesn't.
It's my understanding, though, that the Couste County Commissioners contacted you in this sort of a fact-finding workshop?
Yeah.
That's what that is. So, I think, I think that, you know, addressing issues and trying to problem-solve this, I mean, I don't, I think that's their duty, so.
No, I'm not saying it's not your duty, I'm just putting something in your mind that you might wanna look into. A few years ago when we had, we were looking into building a new jail and a new courtroom, courthouse here, and what that was going to entail, some 70 to 100 million depending on how it was built. And we looked for some federal and state money for that and couldn't find it. That, the people that came down and inspected everything and did the pre-planning on if that happened, said, "This place needs to close because if it ever loses its permits or license, it'll never open."
It needs to stay open, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Can I pick that up tonight, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Why can't somebody make a copy right now? I'll go make a copy.
We'll, we'll get it to you-
So that we have one.
We will get it to you at our first opportunity, Georgia.
So, that, before you can- It has to be filed in my office.
That's why I'm saying-
And it won't be filed till the 30th. I'm headed out of town here. Right after this.
Thanks, Shelley.
So, when, when will, for the, for the public, I'm also on the committee with Chris, when will Chris and I have copies of what Ted has put together, sent to us? Because we are the ones that would have to go out and work in order to pass this levy. And there are a lot of people that have been very wary about this, figuring you're gonna sabotage it one way or the other. So, now at the 11th hour, you let us know you've rewritten-
Actually, I said I would write it in the previous meeting. If I sign, if I sign a document, I write it. That's, that's what I, that's what I do.
Well, what we're asking then for is a copy and I'd like to know when we can expect just-
How about, how about we get through the meeting and we vote on it and then after we vote on it and after the meeting, we can take care of that?
I won't be here when the meeting's over. Will you email it to me? Is there someone who can email it out to Chris and myself?
I'm sure we can-
So, I think there's a misunderstanding. We are voting on the, the SCL 805 tonight, like, so-
But you're not voting on the way we've written it up and we are very concerned-
I think you're, you may be making assumptions.
Then, why don't we have a copy of it?
So, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be reading it-
Okay.
-during the Agenda Item and I think you'll find that it's going to, it's very much a mirror of yours with some, probably some things that Shelley said to put in there.
Shelley looked at the one that we put together and said, "It's fine." So, I, I will be here through the levy on the agenda.
Yeah.
It's the first thing on the action item.
And I'll go ahead and I've got a copy of it here, so I'll go ahead and listen. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Joanne.
Hello, my name's Joanne O'Kane. I'm a retired CPA and business owner, resident of the county. I appreciate the opportunity to get in front of these folks who've judged me six months ago, my business six months ago. You all got to hear quite a few comments about my vacation rental in the Seaco Beach and most of it was fictitious. But, the results of which came down to a decision made by Mr. Fitzgerald. And I am here to point out that I think Mr. Fitzgerald holds entirely too many positions with this county. He's creating more problems than he is solving. And, you know, for instance, in my, my situation, he's legal counsel, I am, when I sue the county for discrimination, are you gonna be defending Mr. Fitzgerald, your own actions? And how does that work?
So, it was a planned decision, actually I defer that to our planner. And so, I signed based on the findings that are presented to me. So, I won't, I wouldn't be defend, as planner, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be appearing in court when you sue for discrimination, so.
So, I wanna avoid, I wanna avoid a town hall back and forth, question, answer-
I'm not here to discuss that matter.
So, but we'd be more than glad to talk with you afterwards.
There's really too much power in this. And to, the 18 months of the process that I went through, the building and planning, and I was treated horribly, terribly unprofessionally, I was sued, they lost. I can only assume that that's why they've decided to discriminate against our business, but I would ask, what is, what, how, is anybody else's business in this room better or worse than mine? I wasn't given equal consideration and, and instead of an excuse, I was given an ORS that says that Mr. Fitzgerald here can go outside what's written in the code and make decisions outside of the code, which should scare each and every one of you property owners, all right? And as a retired CPA, let me just say that I have been involved in audits of municipal organizations and this contract that you have with the finance director is absolutely ridiculous. I think the entire public needs to hear that. I will be doing more research on the county's budget as compared to other budgets. I think there's way too much fiscal funny business going on. And hopefully, anybody that would like to contact me, I welcome you. Any other vacation rental owners, I welcome you to contact me so that we can have a voice with this commission. Thank you.
Rod Palmquist.
I'm here today on behalf of Teamsters Local 223, representing the hard-working men and women of the Curry County Sheriff's Office to address the alarming decisions being made by this board. Decisions that jeopardize public safety, harm the community, and show a shocking lack of accountability. This board has repeatedly claimed there's no money to properly fund the sheriff's office. Yet, at this very meeting, you're moving forward with a $1 million financial package over five years for one of your preferred managerial employees, the county's HR Finance Director. This includes a $15,000 training fund for training this position. Shouldn't an HR Finance Director already be trained? Which is more than the entire training budget for the whole sheriff's office. Our deputies who investigate homicides, infant deaths, and the like have to raise their own grant funds to pay for needed certificates, while you are paying $15,000 for a director-level position who should have already been trained to do their job in the first place. This is prioritizing bureaucracy over the safety of the very community you were elected to serve. Worse, there are now rumors that you are proposing to close the Curry County Jail and move it to Couste County. Let's be clear about what this means. Deputies will lose their jobs, dedicated public servants who protect our community every day. Curry County taxpayer dollars will subsidize Couste County operations instead of staying here. Transportation and other logistical costs will skyrocket as inmates are shuttled back and forth for court appointments and other requirements. And as if that weren't enough, you're also threatening to strip the sheriff's office of critical assets like patrol cars. You talk about using road funds to help the sheriff, but you've only allocated interest payments instead of tapping into the more than $12 million which is available to you. You treat this money like an endowment when it could be used to directly support public safety. To make matters worse, you've threatened to end even those interest payments to the sheriff's office in early 2025. This is not leadership, it's abandonment. You've shifted your focus from finding funding solutions to dictating directives while morale in the sheriff's office crumbles. Just today, one of our dispatchers resigned. How do you expect to provide critical 911 services when your decisions are driving away the very people who make those systems work? If the jail is closed, if deputies are laid off, if patrol cars are taken away, and if dispatchers keep resigning, this community will face a crisis. Response times will increase and public safety will decline. Every one of your constituents will feel the effects of these decisions and they will hold you accountable. Our deputies and staff are ready to work with you to find real solutions, but this board must stop fighting the sheriff and turning its back to public safety. It's time to prioritize this community over politics, over petty personal agendas and bureaucratic interests. The people of Curry County deserve better and we will not stop fighting for what's right. Thank you.
David Brocksmith has his hand over.
I'm Austin DiPaolo, I'm the principal officer of Teamsters Local 223. We've about 2,300 members, about a quarter of them are in law enforcement throughout the state of Oregon. I fully support the statements made by our, our business agent, Rod Palmquist. I appreciate the, the response to my testimony a couple of weeks ago in the letter that you sent me, addressed to our Teamsters Credit Union. I'm, again, I'm the principal officer, it's not the president of our local, I'm the secretary treasurer. I'm here today to urge you to act immediately, it sounds like you have, but it wasn't made clear at the last meeting, to place the law enforcement levy on the ballot. The uncertainty and instability in the Curry County Sheriff's Office have reached a breaking point and this commission has a responsibility to address this crisis that you have contributed to through budget cuts and inaction. The recruitment and retention of deputies and staff in the sheriff's office have become untenable. Your decisions have created a situation where it's increasingly difficult to attract and retain qualified personnel, jeopardizing the safety and well-being of our community. You've helped create this mess and it's now your obligation to help clean it up. The men and women serving in law enforcement deserve better, our members deserve better. They've dedicated themselves to protecting this county, often under dangerous and under-resourced conditions, yet the current instability not only undermines their ability to perform their duties, but also erodes the public trust in our institutions. Our members, along with the people of this county, demand and deserve better leadership, leadership that listens and responds. I urge you to engage in deep listening with your constituents, hear their concerns, understand their frustrations, and act decisively to restore confidence in law enforcement services. Exporting jobs and allowing this crisis to fester is not the legacy you want to leave. The path forward is clear. Commit to placing a law enforcement levy on the ballot without delay. Give the voters of Curry County the opportunity to invest in the safety and security of their Time for actions now. Please do the right things, right thing for our members, for the residents of this county and the future of Curry County. Thank you.
Senator David Brocksmith.
Thank you, commissioners. I wasn't planning to speak, except for the arrogance of the Teamsters representatives, which really pisses me off, because they're the ones politicizing this. State Senator David Brocksmith, for your record, I have sat where you have sat and put law enforcement levies on the ballot. In fact, public safety levies have whole on the ballot. I also serve as the, as a member of the state legislators' public safety committee, and as the council of state governments west co-chair of their public safety committee, which includes all the 13 states from Wyoming to Alaska and Hawaii. And there's only 16 co-chairs of all the state legislators from there. And so Commissioner Alcorn, I appreciate your public service with regards to public safety and your commitment to the same. And frankly, commissioners, your commitment to public safety, I helped pass the legislation that even allows Curry County and six other counties to tap into their road reserves so they can pay for the road deputies and ancillary attributes to road deputies. But back then, we had nearly $42 million in the road fund. And now, to hear that we have, I think it's less than 18?
Yeah, it's, it's less than 18, but it's gotten a little bit better. We've, we actually have recovered just recently 1.7 million that the previous roadmaster had not, had not tried to get reimbursed for from, from storm events. So we're working on it. But it's, it's getting a little bit better. It's not, it's not 12, that's another wrong number. It's, it's about 18, it's getting a little bit better.
Anyway, as far as the Teamsters representatives, I think that you'll find I'm well respected by them, and don't appreciate you coming down here and politicizing this crap. And I don't appreciate you speaking from the audience. You had your three minutes, ma'am, you're rude.
Point of order.
Thank you. So in closing, I just want to thank you for moving forward with a law enforcement levy again, as you did in the last election, so that you can give all the information to the citizens, and you have a team, so it looks like, of citizens that are going to go out there. I just hope that you have all the necessary information that you need from our public safety departments to be able to articulate that need to the residents of Curry County, so that you can move forward in an honest and transparent manner with the actual budget numbers that are necessary. And I know that you're requesting that, and I hope that it comes forward so that you have the information necessary for the citizens to make an informed decision and fund public safety in Curry County.
Thank you, Senator Smith.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have two more slips for public comments, but those are on specific agenda items, so we will move forward in the agenda. And we are now on commissioner comments, which I put that forward in the agenda today. John, would you like to make a comment?
So this is new, I, I thought.
Yeah, I moved it forward for this one.
At this time, no, I, I'm going to wait till commissioner comments at the end of the.
Yeah, we have commissioner update at the end, commissioner comments after public comments.
I'm good.
Okay. Jay?
Well, I, I mean, I, I have quite a few, I think, maybe. So the, a couple of things were said, stated today that need to be, need to be somewhat corrected, stated by the, the Teamsters, who are obviously taking note from the citizens' group there. The, the requested training amount, it's been stated twice tonight of an annual number of $15,000. Number one, that, that part is, is correct, and it was for the entire department.
Two departments.
But it's also been stated that it's double the sheriff's budget, which is incorrect. The sheriff's training budget is $34,250, not including travel annually. And if you included K-9, which has been over the last few years, that's an additional $26,668. So the total training budget for the last few years for the sheriff has been $60,318 per annum, not including travel. So if you're going to make a political or public statement, please try to make it accurate. The, 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 the Teamsters, I think I'm going to have to work backwards. As far as the Teamsters' statements go, like, we, we, we have made a, a public statement. And, you know, a couple of things that, that has been insinuated is our, our, that we are not supporting, that we have not been supporting public safety. And so a couple of things that I would like to remind everyone about is, is, I just have to pull it up here. This, this commission, well, first of all, in the social media press release, which was not ever sent to the BOC, was just obviously public, somewhat public grandstanding is what I would label it, I guess, maybe if I don't have a better term, made four demands, and which, you know, we have no obligation to respond to, but, but it's good for clarification. They demanded that we promptly commit to a date for voting to approve a proposed law enforcement levy. We obviously verbally agreed in the last meeting, and we have it on the agenda today. The next one was to fully fund the sheriff's office immediately, restore critical staffing levels. Well, if we had the ability to do that, we wouldn't need a levy. So that insinuates to the public that we have the capacity to do that, which ultimately hurts this opportunity for moving forward and the members you represent. So having, having cross ideologies doesn't, doesn't assist in any, in any fashion or form as much as well-intentioned as your demands may have been. You know, cease wasting resources on outside law, law firms of harassment of sheriff's personnel. Again, it's misleading on face value. It has the intention to further diminish public perception of the BOC. Additionally, Curry County Human Resource Department, which is responsible for receiving complaints from all county employees and officials, is not aware of any harassment complaints from union represented staff. As far as the, the dispatcher that we are, are losing, I would, I would challenge you to interview that individual and find out why they are leaving. I think you may be surprised. The last one was to end any overreach into the sheriff's authority and allow the sheriff to do his job without lawful interference. Again, this is, this is an accusation based with no evidence and intended to create division and public stir. Nothing has been asked of the sheriff that's not authorized or otherwise within the scope of the Board of Commissioners authority under Oregon law. Referring to the efforts of the BOC to responsible and informed about operations of all functions of county government as overreach is an unformed, uninformed and unwelcome embellishment, and I, I also stand by that. The thing is, I'd, I'd like to make sure that you do have an understanding of is, this is the first board in 10 years since David Brocksmith's levy in 2014 to try to secure our funds for public safety. At the May 2024 levy, Chair Alcorn proposed an alternative staffing plan that reduced administrative positions while increasing union represented positions. The BOC approved funding for a union represented position in a community resource officer in the 2324 budget. The BOC offered the sheriff to use restricted opioid funds to cover two union positions, a community resource officer and a school resource officer, to preserve staffing during those budget cuts. And this BOC voluntarily gave up portions of our own salary to preserve a K-9 deputy that was also a union represented position. All of those positions never came to fruition because they weren't supported by the sheriff. So, you know, my, 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 my point is, and I think questions that were relayed to the union as well is, where was the union when the support was needed for those asks for your members? Can it be expected that the union is, will have support for those in upcoming budget seasons? Or will they remain steadfast that the BOC doesn't have jurisdictional authority to suggest such options? These are questions that I'd like you, you two to reflect on as well. That, you know, that, that's, that's really, and, and I want to get to sum up kind of the crux of some of this other stuff. We understand wholeheartedly that their funding solution needs to be had, and, and hopefully, we find some, some answers to that today, at least to have something to present to the public. The reality is this, over the last 10 years, since 2013, our public safety has been, has been supported by one-time-use funds, over $5 million of one-time-use federal funds, and $18 million of road reserves. At a point, at one point, we had, I'm just going to say, there was an internal struggle, a battle somewhat, and I think it was well-publicized between roads and the sheriff. This is prior to, to me being here, but I was well aware of the scenario. And what happened was, is it was, seemed like there was an essentially a competing action to utilize those resources faster than the other in some fashion. To the tune that in, in, in 2017, the, the standards quo road budget is around $6 million in terms of operations, and we have the revenues generally to offset those, that don't come out of property tax, by the way, the, it's through the 503020 Act, through ODOT, through the state. And so what we, what, what, when I went back to evaluate, what I saw was, in about 2018, 2019, the asks from the road department started to escalate at the same time as the asks from public safety. So that, that, that operating budget went from $6 million on average to $8 million. Then the following year, in roads. And the following year, it went to 10, and then it went to 11, and then it went back down to 10. So they were essentially using anywhere between $4 to $5 million in road fund reserves. At the same time, the needs in public safety were also rising, to a point where at one year, there was over $7 million taken out of the road fund in one year. And it was averaging just over five for several years. So the point being is, had that trend continued, we would be 100%, as somebody said in here, bankrupt in two years, just over two years, if we continued to take upwards of $7 million combined between roads and, and public safety out of the road fund reserve. So obviously, that couldn't continue. Now, this board made a decision that the only way that we could work towards having some sustainability was to utilize the interest off of those, to maintain our principle, so that, that the interest could be relied upon on an annual basis. And we cut back road spending back down to its needed area of $6 million per annum, so that we weren't taking from those road fund reserves at the same time. So we're trying to be looking at a long-term strategic plan until we can finally identify a long time, a long-term funding solution. Now, it's been noted several times, just go use the road funds, just go use the road funds. But the more that we use the road funds, the quick, obviously, the quicker those diminish and the faster we get to zero capacity. And I don't think that's where anyone wants to be. So I would encourage those folks from the union and, and anyone else from the public, that if you are curious or you have questions about where we stand financially and where we have been financially, at least through over the past 10 years, I would invite you to come visit with me at any time. We will, we will definitely have that discussion. So that's what I'd like to say about that. The piece that I'm, that really is getting, is unfortunate, is a lot of this dissension and division and somewhat nastiness, I don't have another way to say it, is, is, has been a snowball effect from an initial ask for information from the sheriff. That's where this all originated, was asking for information that was identified by some as overstepping. And now it's escalated to personal attacks, personal attacks towards our finance director, personal attacks towards our county operations director. And, you know, I read, I, I have every, I'm not big on, on, on social media at this point, but I did pull up, you know, every, the posts from the Citizens for Curry Justice, which has come in here several times to, to, to claim, you know, this, this support for this. And what's interesting, sorry, attacks against Commissioner Alcorn as well, and what's interesting is that I, I would almost venture that more of the posts are attacking individuals as opposed to supporting the sheriff. And I would ask that if the intention is to support the sheriff, why isn't that the sole focus as opposed to spending time and resources attacking everyone else? Unless it is identified that the only way to support the sheriff is to attack the county commissioners, to which I would ask, how does that give the public any confidence in supporting a future levy? That diminishes public support for a levy. So, point is, we're better than that. Our community should be stronger than that, more resilient than that. If you have questions and concerns, be professional, bring them up, we can have those discussions. But when it becomes personal, it takes all of the, it takes all the ability out of having rational conversations out of the, out of the room. So that's, that's what I would ask, is that, like, we, we are better than that. I've seen us be better than that. And, you know, going online and making attacks towards personnel in here, isn't, that, that isn't an effort to support the sheriff, that's an effort to try to discredit somebody else. And so, you know, I would just ask you to reevaluate the priority and, and really try to work in a linear fashion so that we can get something solved. Because right now, nothing's getting closer to being solved. That's all.
So I want to talk about the, Jay, as you put it, the nastiness and the efforts to discredit, and what are we really trying to do here? You know, we have the Citizens for Curry Justice, my understanding is you want to pass a levy. But, but, but yet you come here and are confrontational, and you, you post things on social media about our county employees and about us, and you can post things about me all you want. But what is the real, what, what, what value does that add? How, how does that, how does that move anything forward towards the solution that we desperately need in this county, which is funding? How, how does that, how does that help? I don't, I just, I don't understand, and I, you know, I, I look at social media, and what happens is you post something on social media, and then somebody who's on social media goes to somebody like John Herzog, who's not on social media, and they go, "Oh, John, did, did you hear what Brad Alcorn did? I saw it on social media, so it must be true," right? And then you take that and you spread that, and then next thing you know, there's a rumor in the small community that something happened that didn't happen. It's why I give the disclaimer when people walk up to the microphone, and it's, it's why Jay had to make the corrections he made. You can literally get up here and say whatever you want, you can do the same thing on social media. And when I look at Citizens for Curry Justice, it says in the beginning of their public statement, it says that they are anchored in integrity. And then at the end, it says, "Let's not, let's not let political under, undercurrents pull us apart." Do you mean that? Because I'll use my own case as an example, we're going to talk about the vicious attack of Kena throughout the week, but we'll do that later in the agenda. But my own situation, there was a post from when I was a police officer in Fresno, it was a picture of a Fresno Bee article, showed one of our officers who had been accused of some wrongdoings, and it said that myself and other members of my team were being sued. And we were sued. And it said we were sued for targeting this individual because of his race. And then above that, the group posted, "False accusations and accusatory bullying seem to follow this one," referring to me. So obviously, that's bad. And people see that, they talk about it, and it creates division and dissension. It certainly doesn't make want to, make people want to vote for a law enforcement levy. And my question about that is, well, what happened with that case that you posted? What happened with that case that you inferred I did something wrong? You didn't post the rest of it. You didn't post the follow-up articles or the, the, the easily acquired case.
The truth.
The truth, which was, the case was immediately dismissed because there was no evidence to support the allegations. And by the way, there was a lot of corruption in my agency that year. And when I became aware of it, I took action. I held those accountable. In fact, if you look that year, you'll see that our deputy chief was arrested for selling drugs by the FBI and sent to federal prison. There were other officers arrested, suspended, held accountable. We got rid of that corruption on our agency. It's unacceptable. And I would do that again in a heartbeat. I lost friends over that because of that blue line. But I, I just wonder why you don't post that as well? And now that you know about it, I wonder if you'll post that truth and apologize, but probably not. Because what is the real goal? Is it to create dissension, division? Because that's what it seems like. The other person that knew about that was the sheriff. Because I worked as a reserve deputy, as his canine coordinator, for four years. If I'd done something wrong, do you think he would have allowed that? But yet you post it and you infer that I did something wrong. I don't understand why. I, I, I just, I just don't get how that adds value moving towards the solution that we so desperately need. So to the people that pay attention to social media and hear things about it, I, I want to offer the same disclaimer I give to when people walk up to that podium. When you hear something, don't react to it, check it out, do your own research, vet it yourself, because most of the time, it's not true.
I would just like to respond to that if I could.
No, no.
We won't let people let you talk.
So, I'm, I'm all right, I'm all right with, I, when I accepted the responsibility of this position, I, I accepted the, the personal attacks that come with it, so did my wife, we talked about it. And, and she has definitely experienced this as well. But our county employees that come here every day in a difficult environment and work hard, they, they don't deserve that nastiness, that viciousness. That's not fair to them. And again, we're going to talk about that in a minute, especially in Kena's case, because that was absolutely unacceptable, the things that have gone out on with that throughout the week. That, that, that's all that I have right now. Jay, did you have any other comments that you wanted to make? John?
So I do now, because I didn't understand, I've been sick the last week, so I, I haven't been around, so I didn't understand how you, this is commissioner comments in rebuttal of public comments.
Any comment you want to make, John?
And, you know, as, as a chair, as a commissioner for four years and a chair for a couple of years, I always, you know, when I was chair, I'd never tried not to let the other two commissioners rebut the public comments, because I thought that was public comment time, and we, you know, we have sat here this evening and listened to you folks, and, you know, it's, it's tough. And sometimes you just want to scream out, but you don't, because you were elected to sit here and listen to the public. But we're, and Brad hit it on the nose, this is, we, we gotta, we gotta do something a little better, all of us, this is, and, and I, I used this analogy earlier today with an elected official, I said, you know, at the courthouse, when there's a bad court case or something, they have a metal detector at the front door? Well, here at this room, we need an ego detector, because we need to check that our egos at the door, all of us, us. And I, I personally say, you, you can't imagine how hard it is to sit up here and, and take it. I've, I've sat here and taken it from other folks, and, but you do. And, and that's hard, because we're all, all four of us right here, and I, I think mostly a lot of you folks are type A personalities where it's, you just want to, you know, I mean, there was a time and place, I probably shouldn't say that, that Mr. Bay's little thing hanging off his chin would be hanging in, in my garage right now as a trophy. There was, but it, that's, those days are over. Because that's not the way to get anywhere. So we got, we gotta do better in respecting one another's rights. Georgia, don't shake your head, please. This is, this is the problem, we, we are not Curry County strong. I got a T-shirt on right here, I can show you. Says Curry Strong.
If you're going to address me, Mr. Herzog, then I'm going to request to be.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Curry Strong. Curry Strong means united.
I think we need to go on with the meeting.
Georgia, Commissioner Herzog is going to have an opportunity to speak.
Yeah.
Just don't address me.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't bring me in, dude.
And I apologize, I'm just saying, that's, that's, that's the feelings that we get. And we're not supposed to have those feelings? I'm sorry.
This is going on, it's like a...
Georgia, let Commissioner Herzog finish his public comment. This is his opportunity to speak. I would ask you to give him the respect so that we can hold the meeting and follow our agenda. We are on that topic, let him talk, please.
Just, I apologize if I said anything out of, but we, we're, we're not going to get anywhere if we don't start checking our egos at the door and work together. You got a new commissioner coming on in January, wish him all the luck in the world, I, I just, I'm just a stupid sinner saved by grace, and I, I, I can't say it any other way than we got, it, it's, you got to, we got to throw the, the egos out the door and work together. That's, and the back and forth of social media that I do not see, but I hear, has got to stop. So that's it, Brad, I, probably more harm than good, but...
Anything else, Jay? All right, we're ready to move forward and go to the consent agenda then.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. We are now on 7A, and there is a public comment, Andre Bay.
Thanks, I'm not really sure I want to comment on this, but I'm going to. I hope you guys honor your consensus from the last meeting and vote this levy through. I haven't been asked by anybody or either of the two groups to speak for them, but I just wanted to thank Jay and Brad, and I'm sure the group will agree, for your time and effort you've put in to helping get this levy moved forward. It is appreciated, even when the tippers are flared. I'd also like to recognize Josephine County Sheriff Dave Daniel and his staff for coming over here and paving the road to make this move forward for us. And I also would like to thank Chris and Georgia for being out in the front for us. And also Lieutenant Crone, we appreciate your time. And all the members in the group, both groups, I'm sure will, will say the same thing. And as Chris and Georgia have said many times, all you have to do is put this on the ballot, we will do all the rest. And that's, that's true, we will. We will divide this county and we will knock on doors. And just going to have to get off the agenda item for a second, but John, you need to take your hat off at the appropriate times. And your comment about my beard, you can go fuck yourself, sir.
It's impossible.
So I'm going to ask people to not use that kind of language and to not...
First Amendment right.
First Amendment.
Again, I...
You cannot block it.
I'm going to ask people, I'm going to ask people...
You cannot do that.
You've done enough bullshit in this meeting for one night.
I'm going to ask people to be respectful of everyone here and refrain from using profanity, please.
I apologize, Chair, that was...
I'm simply asking for people to be respectful of each other. We can have disagreements, but we don't need to cuss at each other. That's all I'm asking for. All right. So discussion, action item, law enforcement levy. As I said earlier, I met with Chris Pash a couple of days ago. We had a conversation about the need for the SEL to be completed so that an ORSTAR account could be opened. Chris told me that they had about $15,000 in cash that they were ready to deposit, and there was some urgency to get it done. I immediately spoke to County Council Fitzgerald and asked him to coordinate an SEL with the clerk's office to make sure that we could accommodate those needs. And despite the confrontational interaction about this, I know that we need more money. And I think it's the right thing to do, despite any personal differences, to give the people the opportunity to make that decision. So my support has not changed. But I again want to reiterate what I said, if we could try to work together and stop with the confrontations, maybe we could have some success. And it, what really is the goal? Is it to fund public safety? Because if it is, let's try to work together, that's all I'm saying. If it's not, I mean, continue to attack me, continue to attack our county employees. And, no, you can't. That being said, Ted, you completed the, the 805?
Yeah, you got it, I think.
Okay. Do you have it, Jay? You want to read it?
Sure.
Before you do that, can I make a, a quick correction to some information that was provided by Ms. Cockerham, or do you want to do it?
Well, yes, so I, I do, and it does relate to the, to the 805. There was, when Ms. Cockerham gave her presentation, at one point during the presentation, she said, "Your numbers were wrong, it was, you were incorrect." And then she gave her numbers. We have since then spoke and worked together, and I, it is extremely important that that is accurate. So go ahead and address those, what those discrepancies potentially are.
On the December, or December 4th meeting 2024, at 5:22 minutes into the meeting, Ms. Cockerham made the following statements, and I quote, "I could see that, that Kena's spreadsheet was seriously flawed. Initially, the lesser of the two mistakes was the levy amount was incorrect, was less $21,000," unquote. As a financial, finance professional, you always budget less, and being that this is a levied amount, you're not going to get the full tax dollars. We don't collect all tax dollars. The county doesn't get every penny of tax dollars. We're collecting tax money from months, years ago, and our assessor and tax collections can tell you that as well. So I used a reasonable number, not the exact budgeted amount number that you guys provided us. That's why not my number was, was less than what you had anticipated or thought it should have been. Ms. Cockerham also stated, and I quote, "But the serious flaw is that she has all eight hires working as of day one during the five years, and as we know, this is not going to happen," unquote. On November 25th, 2024, at 14:22 in the meeting, Commissioner Alcorn did ask for clarity of these positions from yourself and from Lieutenant Crone. Both of you did say that, yes, these numbers would fund eight people. My job was to provide the numbers based on eight people. That's what I was asked to provide, so that's what I did provide you guys. I take exception to the fact that you're saying that my numbers were seriously flawed when I was doing it based on the information that I was provided by you and Lieutenant Crone, based on the information that you said staff. What I think commissioners is seriously flawed is that the intent, which again was confirmed, confirmed in your meeting, was to not use this money to hire people, rather than stating that a half a person the first year, a half a person the next six months, and then leaving an ending fund balance at the end of the five years. And when you reached out and asked, you asked a follow-up question, what if you had the opportunity to hire five people? Would you utilize it? And the answer was no. I think that was seriously flawed.
Georgia, Georgia, no, no.
I'm, I'm being...
Georgia, it's not your time to...
And I'm on the levy committee.
Georgia, it's not your time to talk. No.
I disagree with everything that she has just said.
I disagree with yours.
And she disagrees with you, and this is her time to speak. Please.
I'm just saying that I was wrong.
She is saying that, that's, that's, that is correct, and she's saying that you're wrong. She is saying that. That's, that's, that is correct. And she's saying that you're wrong. And she's qualifying that right now. Just like when you said she was wrong, when you said she was wrong last time, she wasn't here. Please let me conduct this meeting. And I want the Finance Director to finish what she has to say.
I, I, I just wanted to say that, that, um, that I, I, the numbers that I provided was numbers providing the positions that we were told that this levy would fund. Um, and then it was changed to not fund these positions because they said that that was unlikely. Can't speak to whether it's unlikely or not. That's not my job. But my job was to provide those numbers, and I did. In addition to that, there's O R S two-six-zero-four-two-three that prohibits, it restricts, um, political campaigning by public employees. And I did what I felt was to the limit of that because I do not have a political stance in this. Um, and I will give you a copy of this because I, on business time, cannot do that, nor can Lieutenant Crone. That's all I have to say.
All right. So, do you want to read it now?
Sure. So, five-year local option tax for Curry County Law Enforcement. The question would present as, should Curry County levy one dollar and twelve cents per one thousand of assessed property value twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty to fund Curry County Sheriff's Office Patrol and nine-one-one dispatch? Due to the current county, summary statement? Due to the current county finances, staffing and the, for the Curry County Sheriff's Office has been greatly reduced, allotting three or fewer deputies to patrol over three hundred miles of road within the county, resulting in a dangerous reduction of public safety and precarious nine-one-one dispatch situation. Passage of this law enforcement levy for one dollar and twelve cents per one thousand of assessed property value is estimated to initially raise four million, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars annually to fund an additional five patrol deputies, two dispatchers, and one sergeant, as well as one-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-five dollars towards marine and search and rescue. This levy is intended to replace one million, one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars of restricted road funds used for patrol and one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars from the Curry County General Fund, which is currently used, uh, to part fund of SAR, eighty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars, Marine Patrol, thirty-thousand-three, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, Civil and Criminal Patrol, three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, and nine-one-one dispatch, eight-hundred-and-eighteen, uh, eight-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighteen, I can't say it right.
All right.
Eight-hundred.
Eight-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven.
Yes, thank you.
Lots of eights.
Yeah. Upon passage, a five-member review board of county citizens will be appointed to oversee the use of levy funds to ensure they are spent in accordance with this measure to fund public safety, safety annually. Unused funds shall be restricted to fund levy-provided personnel. The estimated tax cost for this measure is an estimate only based on the best information available from the county assessor at the time of the estimate and may reflect the impact of early payment discounts, compression, and the collection rate.
Okay.
I think it is, uh, the, 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 there may have only been a few commas and things of that nature that were added, uh, from the original request.
I added, I added, um, nine-one-one, for example, because, you know, a lot of the citizens aren't necessarily clear on what dispatch is. So, we want to make sure that that service that they, they interact with, it can be, you know,
Relatable.
That's what they're funding.
Sure.
Okay, further discussion?
I'll move to approve, uh, placing this SEL eight oh five on the ballot for the May twenty-twenty-five election cycle.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
And yes, motion passes three to zero. All right. Next up on the agenda.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is the discussion of the next, uh, business meeting date, um, and how we're gonna proceed, uh, forward with, uh, I'd actually also like to talk a little bit about, uh, I know with John leaving and Patrick coming in, I know, Patrick, you and Jay have other conflicts, uh, other responsibilities in the community. Um, maybe at least coming up with a day of the week that would, would work best for, uh, those two schedules so that Natasha can kind of line that out so that as we go into January, um, we, we can, um, uh, move quickly in what those, uh, meetings will look like. So, uh, let's start with the next business meeting.
I was hoping for January second. That would be the Thursday.
Let me look at that. I do have a conflict at the end of January. Uh, I have some medical appointments I have to go to, so, um, so you're talking at Thursday, the second?
Yes.
Okay, that works.
My first day in office isn't until the sixth of January.
Okay. Can we do the, the ninth? That would give us basically, it would be back-to-back weeks.
Nine and sixteen?
Mm-hmm.
If we wanted to create a little more time, we could do seven, sixteen.
I'm out to five, six, seven.
Okay, then, um,
And I'm out fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, which I've already provided Natasha and, uh, Rubia all my, all my conflict schedule so far for
Yeah, and I'm out,
January.
And I'm out the twenty-third, so.
And I'm out.
You're out. You're out.
He's out of here.
That was your best timing of the night, right there, John.
Um, you said, you're out sixteen, Patrick?
Yes.
Uh, can we do nine and fifteen?
No, I'm out fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Okay.
So, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, I'm available.
Twenty is Martin Luther King Day.
And I'm, I'm available on the, the ninth as well.
Um, I'm gone, I'm, yeah, I'm gone the twenty-first. I, that's why, the first day I'm gone. So, um, yeah, nine and thirty work.
Okay.
For me.
It's a five-week.
Yeah, that works for me as well.
Okay. So we'll go, uh, we'll go nine and thirty, nine being the first meeting, thirty being the second meeting of the month.
What time?
Um, do you guys have any time conflicts? Uh, I want to make sure that we take into consideration that we are accommodating the public. Um, you know, we've, we've had some, uh, good communication with the public about our meeting times, kind of mixing them up, uh, with folks at work and want to come here and can't attend earlier meetings. So, um, I'm, I'm open to any of those.
Four P M. and six P M. schedule for those dates are, are fine with whatever is decided upon. Okay?
Does that work for you?
Sure.
And we can, we can adjust those times as, as needed, as, uh, uh, based on the community input we get. So we'll go, um, we'll go on the ninth at four, and then the thirtieth at six.
Sure, it's fine with me.
All right. And then how about, do we want to keep those days of the week throughout the year? Um, or do we want to, uh, use some alternative days?
We can figure that out in the first January meeting, can't we? Somebody set the schedule.
I'd just kind of like to, to, um, tighten those days up, uh, so Natasha can kind of plan, uh, the calendar ahead. Uh, also, I think Natasha's out on the thirtieth also, so we're gonna have to get some help, uh, for that, for that specific meeting.
Okay.
Maybe we can talk Miranda into running the cameras and, and, uh, get Rubia in here. She's not, uh, running dogs. So.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on that, Patrick?
No, no other discussion.
Jay? Nothing? Okay. I think we're, I think we're safe to move on then.
Okay.
All right. Next up is the Elk River Lease. That's, uh, seven D. Ted, I think that's you.
It is me. Um, are you getting one about on this? You're good, okay. So this, this lease has, kind of predates me, um, and it is for, it's a, it's an agreement between, um, between Curry County, Oregon, and Elk River, Elk River Development, which they are working on, uh, golf course, um, with, and some of the lands, a portion of land that, um, Curry County uses or owns is going to be used as, it was, it was part of the deal that was made. Would you like to fill them in?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners, David Brocksmuth, Port Orford. Um, so back when I was actually the Chair of this Board back in two thousand thirteen, uh, we moved forward with, uh, a, it hits number two, helps with number one, hits number three of your strategic goals with regards to economic development, and looking at a, uh, world-class, uh, golf resort up in North County, uh, which would be, bring in taxes, create jobs and housing. Um, the county had a small, small parcel of land, uh, that is adjacent to the, uh, the, uh, property of Nap Ranch where this project is moving forward on. In two thousand sixteen, entered into a lease. Um, if it would have been purchased, uh, at the time, for example, the county would have sold it. It's, it's a foreclosed property, so the county would only generate the resources of its percentage, which would have been six percent
Six percent, yeah.
at the time. And then those dollars would have gone to the other taxing districts. But by leasing it long-term, the county will receive that revenue and be able to maintain and hold that revenue solely to the county, uh, in perpetuity of the lease. And so that's why we decided to do it that way. Uh, it was meant for some, some buildings and other, uh, uh, infrastructure that, uh, plans have changed. Um, in fact, the, the project is looking, uh, to partner with the city of Port Orford on utilizing, uh, what is best science practice, actually, uh, their treated effluent, uh, for irrigation. Uh, and so therefore, as the project has moved forward and development has moved forward, this property has been identified as the best location for the holding pond for the treated effluent. And so hence needing to come before you and change the language in the lease to reflect, uh, the change of use of property.
Well, it's a, the entirety of it is a, it's a pretty exciting, uh, economic, uh, stimulant to our, to our community, um, and also addresses, uh, a few other needs that you pointed out. So, um, this is a, this is a, this is a good thing for our area. This is a great thing for our area. So, I would move to approve the proposed and amended and restated lease.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion is second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. All right, next up is, uh, discuss USDA contract. Uh, Jay, I think you asked for this to be on the agenda.
Yeah, so, um, so, so we currently don't have, um, the USDA, uh, contract for wildlife services. Um, we, uh, we had reduced it, well, we had cut it during, uh, the budget reductions. Um, so, uh, the, the district manager, Paul Wolf, uh, I didn't see him today, but, um, had, uh, revamped it. So, um, initially, um, the annual cost for this was something like eighty-nine thousand. He reduced that down to not to exceed sixty thousand. And what we have to also understand is this isn't like a, we pay upfront contract. It's a, it's kind of a, as, as they provide the service, so they've never provided service exceeding sixty, so they felt like that was a pretty safe number. Um, and, uh, so, understanding our current fiscal situation, they drafted a contract, an updated contract proposal for us to examine that, uh, wouldn't exceed thirty thousand dollars, but it would be only for the remainder of the fiscal year for, so essentially for the next six months. So, why, why do we even have this, right? I think that it's a question I think a lot of public members would, would, would ask. And, um, what is the USDA wildlife services? And, um, Ted's very versed in this, and I'll give my, um, in my layman's, uh, example, but, um, you know, they preserve, um, our, our ranchers, um, our ag, uh, from, uh, from, from wildlife that essentially debilitates their ability to do, uh, their work. Um, we've had an incredible increase in predators, um, and, uh, several ranchers, especially, you know, sheep farmers, um, generally take the blunt of this, uh, along with some cattle ranchers. Um, and I would say probably the biggest industry that takes up, up, this is, is the timber industry because, you know, a full-grown black bear can destroy up to thirty, uh, standing trees, uh, ruin thirty trees a day. Um, and so, they are, they do have a contract with our large timber companies, um, to, to help with those. They do not assist with, um, the, the smaller private timberlands or identified areas as forest and grazing. Um, without this type of an agreement, they wouldn't be assisting with those. So, uh, essentially, they, they, they help to protect some economic resiliency in the ranching community, um, by performing, um, predator mitigation. So that's what, that's what they do. Um, and he presented this, he sent this to us as an opportunity to try to, to try to preserve the remainder of the year with, of our contract, should we choose to. So, I, I, you know, I, I, I obviously don't know where everybody stands on this. I don't even know, you know, Kena, you'd have to tell us, um, if this is even something that's, it would even be remotely financial, financially feasible. But I wanted to at least have the discussion.
Okay. Yeah, the issues, I mean, the, the, the service without question is a needed service. And it's, uh, the way that it's structured totally makes sense. Um, the question is, where does the money come from, right?
Sure.
Is there any possibility, Kena, for Title III money here? Is it?
You know, I think there might be. Um, and that's something that I would like to look into, to see if we could possibly fund it, um, future years with Title III dollars. Um, currently, I mean, obviously, it, it's too late in the game this year, but, um, currently for fiscal year twenty-five, if we were to pay for this, we would have to use general fund dollars, add a non-departmental, departmental, um, general fund dollars at this point in time, which we have limited funds of. So.
Well, I guess the, the question is, is, and I wouldn't expect anybody here to, to make a decision on this. I really wanted to have the discussion, but is it something that we feel warrants further investigation and discussion, you know, through finance, to see if it's something feasible to move forward with? Or is it something we just feel like needs to get tabled until the next fiscal year and budget process?
No, I would agree with a further examination of it. And, and I would absolutely agree with, uh, uh, Kena looking into the Title III, for example, uh, see if that's a, a possibility and, um, and to see potentially, um, how we can incorporate that in the budget.
I, I would agree. I mean, um, I've gotten multiple calls from local ranchers who are struggling because they are having to keep a lot of their livestock indoors, feeding them alfalfa at expenses that, uh, only Ted really could comprehend. Um, and, uh, it, you know, when you're not able to graze outside because of the predators, it obviously bears a tremendous, um, it takes, it takes the ability to actually have a financial gain out of your livestock, and it makes raising livestock not feasible.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, just something to consider. So, we will do that. Um, and I will contact, uh, Director Wolf and let him know that's kind of where we stand.
Yeah, and let him know we appreciate their flexibility in working with us and, and, uh,
They really do.
They, they've really gone out of their way to try to, you know, just to help us problem solve. And I think they understand our financial situation, but I think they also understand the need. So, I appreciate that.
They have, I mean, and they've worked with, of any manner of, of, of wildlife, you know, and, and they're, they're real professionals at it. And I was thinking the other day, we may need them up by where I live, 'cause two tom turkeys were chasing my wife's car. I don't know what to do about that.
All right, so I think we're, we're pretty clear on that. Further discussion? Anybody? All right. Next up is the employment contract. So we're at seven F, and we do have a public comment on that. Kylie, did you want to comment on this one?
So don't buzz me at three minutes. It's like three minutes. I'm Kylie Wagner, County Assessor and Tax Collector. I struggled on whether or not I should speak today. But I took an oath as an elected official to represent the taxpayers and the people of Curry County. I also want to teach my children that it's okay to speak up if you think something isn't right, but do so in a respectful manner. The package that you're offering, the finance HR position, is unacceptable, not just because of the amount of money, but because it's disrespectful to the employees who lost their jobs and the employees that are currently still here. I have several employees that are due for their annual reviews who are stepped out and need to be reclassed. When discussing this with my deputy, I said the county doesn't have the money, and hopefully we could readdress it at budget. But in reality, we do have the money. It's just not for them. When I asked about out-of-class pay for all the additional job duties that my employees would be taking on after the loss of our FTE, Kena, you said cuts are cuts, and unfortunately, we would all have to pick up the slack. I'm answering phones, filing, manning the office when the employees are sick, plus trying to keep up on my day-to-day duties. I'm not sure how you plan to do that from Lane County. You should be here in the trenches with the rest of us. The assessor's office has notoriously worked four-ten's for around thirteen years and was still able to be open to the public on Fridays. Kena, you came in and required us to move to five-eights because of the way that you interpreted the union contract. The union disagreed with you and said they'd like the employees to stay on the four-ten's. I stressed to you how important it was to have the ten-hour workday because of how A&amp;T operates, and this is what was best for my department and the public. You told me my situation wasn't unique and that everyone thinks their department is most important. So I ask you, what makes your situation unique and why do you think that your department is most important? You then ended up telling me that having employees on a four-ten work week was a financial liability to the county because they would be less likely to use their vacation time. And ultimately, it was your responsibility to look out for the county's best interest. So I did a little math. If all five of my union employees were to max out their vacation, which caps at two hundred hours, and all quit or get fired at the exact same time, the county would be on the hook for twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. If having five employees on a four-ten work week is considered a financial liability, then what would you call your contract? Your payout would be to the tune of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. That is if the county had to pay out the last year of your contract with the COLA included and two hundred hours of vacation, because I could only assume, working one week a month, that you would be less likely, in person, sorry, working one week in person in the county, that you would be most likely to use, not use your vacation time. By accepting this contract, are you looking out for the county's best interest? I would also like to point out that our elected officials did not receive COLAs last year. At this time, it was appropriate because I was under the impression that we were all making financial sacrifices. To add insult to injury, the BOC wants to pay for her travel expenses. You would think with a salary like she is receiving, she could pay for her own travel when visiting our community. But no, they want the taxpayers to dip back into their pockets and pay for it. Kena, you sat in the budget hearings and said that the county is broke and we are standing on the edge of a financial cliff, and that every department would feel the effects of the cuts. But somehow, your department actually gained a point-five FTE, and you found money for yourself. She is not burdened with our gas prices, our grocery prices, our inflated rents, because the county is going to pay for that. She makes significantly more than the rest of the employees who are burdened with the high cost of living in this community. How are we supposed to trust a person pushing a levy, a gas tax, consumption tax, or whatever it may be, when it has no bearing on their life, much less their wallet? You are not a taxpayer, a voter, or a resident of Curry County, and from my understanding, do not plan on becoming one. I stand here today in front of the board and ask you to please just revisit it at budget. Just table it and tell budget so that we can be transparent on where the funds are coming from. Thank you.
Thanks, Kylie. So I'll, I'll, I'll start this discussion and I'll give you this perspective. So when I started, when I started in the Budget Committee in 2019, I'm trying to remember her name, the Finance Director then.
Smelzer?
Who was before Julie?
Kylie, can you?
I'm sorry.
Who was the Finance Director before Julie Smelzer?
No. So we had Brad Rucker, oh, Julie.
Who was before Julie?
I'm sorry. We had Louise Calstrum.
There you go. There you go. So she was the first one, then Julie, then Brad, then
Frank.
Frank. So Kena is the fifth Finance Director that, that I've worked with. And I have to say during that time, I made a lot of decisions, being a Budget Committee member, that were based on information that came from the Finance Director and information that came from the Treasurer's Office. Those were the two primary sources of information that I was receiving, that I was basing my recommendations on as a, as, as a Budget Committee member. And the other factor that I was basing my recommendations on was the assurance that our elected officials, including the sheriff, would be moving forward with a funding solution other than road funds. So each year, we discussed the dwindling road funds, we discussed the use of the road funds. But we also discussed how our leadership was going to come up with a solution that was going to either be put to the voters in the form of a levy, a district, or some mechanism. And we had many conversations about that, but nothing ever happened. And I have to say that the information that we were getting in 2019, 20, and on was flawed. It was very flawed. It was, if I, if I would have known what I know, what I know now, I certainly would not have made the recommendations that I had made during that time. So that being said, it, it really illustrates the pivotal position of the Finance Director in terms of training, experience, and ability. The same thing with the Treasurer's Office. You know, finance is kind of like IT. You have to have both of those positions, and they have to be, they, they, they have to be accurate with their, with their work. If they're not, well, look what we saw with the IT situation and the costs associated with that. So that being said, especially, especially as we struggle with not having enough money, this is a, this is a critical position and role. And I, and I, I want to move this conversation forward by just, I want, I want Kena to go back to when she first got here and the, the state of this county, when you first came in, we were, we had gone to ElCog, we were, Frank had left, we were kind of dead in the water. ElCog was, we were outsourcing that for obvious reasons. And then you came in. When you came in, just if you don't mind, I'd like to hear a description of, from your perspective, what you were facing.
But just before we start, remember, we were contracting with ElCog, and they supplied Kena at, at actually a higher rate than we are currently paying Kena. And so I want to clarify, I know, I know that, that sometimes, sometimes it's hard, it's hard for people who work here at the county to have to follow new rules and, and, and understand that we have to, have to follow actual discipline in every department. And I'm sorry, but Kena's kind of like your mom. She shows up and she says, we're going to have to follow these rules. And, and it was a tough thing, but I will say that she, she made us all do it.
So, day one.
So when I arrived to the county, my first day was February 22nd of 2024. So I've been here just shy of ten months. The treasurer was twenty-six months behind in making deposits. We had deposits that were twenty-six months old that had not been entered into our fiscal system. They may have made it to the bank, but they were not into our fiscal system. We had outstanding transactions that were owed to other agencies, some very small agencies that heavily rely on the taxes that we are supposed to pass through to them, that we collect on their behalf. We had thirty million dollars of bank adjustments. There are a little over thirty million dollars of bank adjustments. These bank adjustments were used in our fiscal system every month to force balance our bank accounts, to force a match to what the bank said, to what our financial system said.
Wow.
We had three million dollars of errors recorded to wrong funds, therefore misstating other balances in other funds across other funds. There were bank transfers from one account, but what was recorded in the financial system didn't match it. It was from different accounts. The Budget Committee and the Commissioners were using numbers that were made up essentially to compile your budgets. You had no idea how much money you actually had in these funds. The last finalized annual comprehensive financial report that was submitted to the State of Oregon was in FY21. We had years and years of reoccurring audit findings. You had received notices from ODOT to the potential loss of all federal awards due to non-compliance. And prior to my arrival, any of your, so your GFOA Blue Book, which is a critical book when doing governmental financials, was twenty-five years old. So slightly outdated. And I'm saying that sarcastically.
Wow.
There's one other thing that I just was thinking about also. I was thinking about the departments and how all of them, including Kylie's department, came to me and were incredibly upset and demanding action be taken because of the hours and hours that each department had to spend to run down and locate their deposits, if you recall. They were, they, they were, they, each department was manually having to do this. We attempted to work with the then Treasurer and then Finance Director. We, we got nowhere. We, we couldn't get anywhere. I, I estimated it's, it's, it's a couple thousand hours a year total for all the departments together that were wasted on, on something that should never have been an issue. And, and that got, that got addressed with, that got addressed with a combination of, of Kena and our new Treasurer, Nick.
Yeah.
So where we stand now, I did come to the county with ten, ten years of experience with the Cassell fiscal system. I can almost guarantee you, you weren't going to get somebody to come in here and know exactly how to work your fiscal system and have the experience I have within that fiscal system. I have worked with the product donors of the Cassell system in order to make that system work the way it does, have a great working relationship with them. We're now working on 24's audit, and that means that we are up to date. I'm happy to say that in ten months, the Fiscal Department and the Treasurer, we are working on up-to-date information, which is critical. And that took a lot of hard work. The Treasurer makes daily deposits, and he records them daily in our fiscal system. Before he goes home every day, I can tell you how much money each department has deposited for that day, which is phenomenal, because that means our cash is current at all times. All bank reconciliations are done by the fifteenth of the following month, so that we have accurate records of our bank records. And we do not make bank adjustments. If there's an oddity, we hunt it down, figure it out, and correct it if there's an error. We haven't had any, but I'm telling you that we, that the department knows, we don't make bank adjustments. There is no excuse for bank adjustments.
With every, with every claim, with every, every claim is reviewed now, as it was not in the past. If, if, if Kena's not available, then I step in and review them up. It's a time-consuming thing. Mostly, we scan them and send them up to, up to Kena because she, you know, it is the 21st century. We've got, we got phones and computers and all kinds of stuff and
I don't need to be sitting at a desk in here in order to be looking at your financials.
But it, you know, we could, I, I, personally, for me, if I have an effective worker, I don't care where that worker is. And I would, I, I want that worker to be wherever they can be most effective for themselves and for, for the entity that I'm associated with.
So all our journal entries or transfers amongst funds match the bank accounts? If we're moving money around, they all match. And I was happy to be able to give the committee, Budget Committee and Commissioners numbers. And I'm sorry, they weren't the numbers that everybody liked, because it was a really difficult thing to realize how much money wasn't had and, and what you guys thought. So can't kill the messenger, but, but I did what I was asked to do.
Right. And I, I guess that's to my point, where I said, if I would have known what I know today, I probably wouldn't have made some of the decisions that I had recommended back then, for that very reason, right there. And given the, the challenging financial situation this county's in, we absolutely have to, I mean, I can't, I can't imagine taking a step back and, and going backwards to what we had previously been doing.
And I'd like to say, I came here voluntarily, contrary to what's on social media. This contract would not include a raise. I do not work for Lane Council of Governments and have not worked for Lane Council of Governments since I quit to come here. I saw a need for the county, and I like a challenge, and that's why I decided to come here. I was already, you guys were paying, I don't know, a hundred and eighty bucks an hour contract for me elsewhere.
I had a question also. On the, on the last thing we heard, so did your department actually grow?
Well, actually, no. I, I can tell you right here. So I am the only trained financial person in that office. Prior, you had a Finance Director, you had a Assistant Finance Director at one point in time, and a Financial Clerk of some sort. There was one HR person. Currently, we have myself. The Treasurer is back towards our department. I have one and a half FTE that helps in HR, and I have a person that does payroll and AP.
I remember we had, we, we had three people in that department, and nobody was checking claims. And so we were paying, we were paying for electricity at the fairgrounds out of TLT.
Four, four and a half, if you count Nick.
We had a conversation, Kena, when I brought it up, and you said, yeah, you're right. When I said you actually grew by a point FTE.
We grew in HR. So before, there were two Treasurers, because we, we all think of ourselves as Finance. We had two Treasurers, we had one payroll HR people, and we had three Finance people. So that is six and a half people. If you include Nick in that, we are four and a half. We are down. Okay. So we're still down. So, but it's all a group, though. I mean, we work really closely and together. And it is not a pay increase. It is not, you know, social media said that I'd get an eight percent annual increase. First of all, our step increases are not five percent like the Sheriff's Department. I'm assuming they modeled it after the Sheriff's Department with a three percent COLA. You know what? There's nothing that says I can't live wherever I choose. I don't choose to live in Curry County. It's totally false to say that my husband and I haven't looked at properties here in Curry County, because we have looked at a lot of properties.
Tried to buy my place.
I did. Ted and I had conversations, and we have looked at different properties. On average, I work seventy hours every week. I am available twenty-seven, or twenty-seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. And believe me, I am on the phone all the time.
I call her at all hours.
Yes. I am on the phone. You know what? It's a curse sometimes working at home, because I'm sitting in my office, and my husband's like, you're coming out of here today? You're coming out of here? I work all the time.
Can I ask a question? I waited two weeks for an email.
So.
Two weeks.
I was on vacation.
You didn't have an auto?
I just, yes, I did.
You said I, you, you emailed me back.
Last week's email, I did reply back to you.
Well, can we, hey, can we, can we keep this kind of, this kind of cat fighting to a minimum? That'd be great. Let's
So regardless.
Go ahead.
Um, my benefit package isn't any different than any other benefit packages here at the county. Actually, you cannot opt out of Curry County's benefit package the way that the contract is wrote with our insurance carriers. So that is not an option of, of any sorts.
By the way, on that, on that, when you were talking about earlier, when somebody else was interpreting a contract for it for us, they said that you got a three-point-two percent COLA every year?
I, I get whatever.
But is that? But is that, is that, do we know what we're getting?
No, we do not.
So that was a false statement as well. Okay.
Um, the training, if you read it, is training, you know, it says budgeted for HR and payroll. That is not my training. That is also lodging meals mileage.
So.
And, and just one other thing, if I may.
Sure.
Um, I know Luke Lieutenant Crone's post is nothing more than a retaliatory attack. And um, I, I do feel like it's a retaliatory attack.
You're talking about the social media post?
Correct.
Okay.
Of saying it's more, i- it was a hundred percent inaccurate, as you know. Um, and I provided the numbers.
So the, the, the training budget, so uh an example would be, if you have fifteen thousand dollars there and you have um, let's say um one of your, one of your people in HR wants to attend a training and it's going to cost uh seventeen hundred bucks.
Correct.
That's going to come out of that budget?
Absolutely. I received an email actually yesterday asking for something similar.
So, if somebody from the Sheriff's Office, if the Sheriff got ahold of you and said, hey, uh, I want, I want my new uh clerk, dispatcher, whoever, to be familiar with the financial program, uh, whatever, uh, Cassell. And they need to attend this training. Would that come out of that budget?
Um, Cassell co- uh, budget actually comes out of IT.
Okay.
It comes, so if they wanted to go there and do training, that is their expense, and any training if they want to do that type of stuff. But um everyday Cassell stuff, like any transitional stuff that we're doing, that comes out of um the software portion of IT that we have been, we budgeted in there.
Okay.
Uh, on that topic, when you're talking about Cassell, one thing that, that maybe the public ought to know is that, is that one thing that I, I found uh great about Kena was her expertise with Cassell, which is the main program that, that, that drives most of the functions of this county, or at least the financial functions of it. And we've, Curry County has subscribed to Cassell for twenty-two years. How many people are proficient in it here?
Me.
One person, one person. What's the, what's the monthly subscription rate roughly?
Um, about twenty, a little over two thousand a month.
Okay, so twenty-two years times two thousand a month, that's a lot of money. I went to Brookings River High School. Math's not my strong suit, but sounded like a quarter of a million dollars that got thrown in the toilet. I think it's time that we actually hire people that are willing to learn and engage with the systems that we have and work those efficiently. And that's what I was trying to do when, when I suggested Kena come work here, and I think I was successful.
Jay?
You know, um, I uh, I understand um the, the, the essentially what uh Assessor Wagner's talking about, um, but I will say, you know, that um we this, a lot of people see this as a, as a, as a contract for Kena, and I see this as a contract for the county to preserve five years of financial fiscal responsibility that we've lacked uh for a very long time, which um I don't think anyone here would argue isn't in the best interest of, of the county to have uh fis- good fiscal stewardship. And uh, you know, we, we may not, had we had this in the past, we may not even be in the contentious scenario that we've been facing recently.
Makes you wonder, doesn't it?
And so uh this um, you know, that uh, it's, that's, so that's kind of where I stand. I, I, I again um you know, would revisit my earlier comments about you know, the uh, the attacks online um that were uh not necessary nor um in some cases uh accurate. Uh, attempting to discredit uh an individual um is uh in an effort to try to stymie um, you know, their, their uh longevity or county's fiscal security is uh pretty uncalled for.
Yeah, the, the only thing that I would suggest um about regarding going forward with this, I, you know, I, I actually, I brought it, I brought it based on, on the attacks that were, that were going on, and I wanted, I wanted Kena to know that she had the support of the Commissioners. That the, my one concern with having brought it, having brought it in this evening, I think it might have been premature. I would, I know this is John's last night, and, and I, I would rather have Patrick be responsible for, for, you know, if he wants to make that, we have him be a part of the, of the debate and conversation for me, but it's up to you guys. John, go ahead.
So I actually, I liked Kylie's uh um well, just her, her, the way she said, her recommendation of waiting until budget year. What, why, you know, was there a, a reason we have to do it right now, or can we just, you know, business as usual until the budget season, or you, you know, and Ted's right, this is my last night. I think that would be a gr- good uh thing for the, the complete new board, but uh you know, timing is everything, right, sometimes, and this, and optics um are, so I would, I would recommend that we did wait. And you, you know, af- after tonight, you can do what you want, and the three of you, but I like that idea, that recommendation of waiting until the budget year, the bud- you know, because it's right around the corner. We, we start March.
Hopefully, we're done before the end of March.
Yeah, so it's, it's earlier than that, but, because it can be business as usual until then, but that's just, that's my recommendation. I, I like that. So, and I like Ted's idea of not, not voting on it tonight. So with that, I would, I would probably say I wouldn't vote for it tonight, so, but that, and that's neither here nor there either.
Thoughts?
Thoughts? Well, um, again, this is nothing that uh I don't already have. Um, it was uh as Ted and I discussed, due to um attacks on me personally, which is extremely inappropriate. And um, it's none of your business, again, where I live or where I reside, and actually, we have a lot of county employees that don't rely in the, reside in the county, just, you know, just so you know. Um, and I, I'm not above taking the high road and saying that we can pull this until now. I'm, I'm not above that. I do not think that I am better than anybody else. My goal here is to provide accurate numbers. I'm a black and white person. I will not lie to you and give you wrong information, because that's not what I'm paid to do here. I'm here to do what I have been tasked with by my superiors and providing the information that, that they have asked. So, I'm, I'm not above or opposed to pulling it off of tonight's agenda.
Okay. So, um, by the way, Kylie, thank you for taking the time to come tonight and make your statement. No, no, I, 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 I just want you to know from me, I appreciate you, I, I wish more. I, I wish more elected officials would come to our meetings and be involved, and I'm just saying, thank you, thank you for making that point to come tonight, and um, and I appreciate that. And uh, and Kena, I absolutely support um, everything you're doing, having uh gone through many years of what's happened in the past, and I appreciate your professionalism. I appreciate you answering the phone at ten o'clock at night when I call you. I, uh, ahead of a meeting, and I, I uh, I, I can't thank you enough for taking on a very difficult challenge. I uh, you know, I, sometimes I say, man, you know, there's a couple people sitting up here and I wonder why we're doing it, so. But I, I thank you for that. If, if your thoughts and feelings are to, to uh wait, then um I, I want to support, uh, I want to support that, and I would, I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, number one, um I would be remiss if I didn't say I was taken aback a little bit um at your willingness um to uh e- essentially, you know, put uh, I don't know how to put this in words, but um to identify that, hey, um, this is, this is what I already get, this is what I'm doing, and uh, you know, but uh, but I also advocate uh that if we go that route, that um that it is something that we revisit, uh, because I do firmly believe that having um, a, 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 a secure financial presence in the county is extremely vital to being able to move forward. And, you know, we have been, so I will do a little, and Kylie knows too, I'll do a little. We, we had a Finance Director named Gary Short. Gary was here for a really long time. And I tell you what, Gary had straight numbers. We didn't have to worry. And it was because he had consistency, he had systems, and people knew exactly what they were. And then we had a myriad of Finance Directors over a small pa- period of time. And um, it's no wonder why, you know, we couldn't get real numbers. Because the, you know, the Finance Directors were trying to learn the systems themselves from what the previous person did and unwind that, and uh literally, it, it literally took somebody who speaks the program's language to truly unwind it um from, from four years of being wound. Um, and so, you know, uh, I, 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 I do uh, I do hope we, and I do want to revisit this, and if it is when a time when Patrick comes on to be more versed in the, in the scenario and something that you agree to uh going forward, and I think that that, that's a an honorable thing to do on your end, uh, Kena, because it is understandable that, you know, having having a new Commissioner come on to, 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 to be involved in that process as well, but um, again, I, I don't see this as much as a contract for Kena as I see it as a contract for the county.
I would agree.
But I'm willing to do it.
Okay. Then is the consensus to wait?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
All right, and that's what we'll do. We'll wait, and we will move forward in the agenda. So next up is public hearings, annexations into rural fire department districts. Uh, this is some legal language that we have to go through, so please bear with us as we as we do that. So, I will uh say that this is a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners uh conducted pursuant to ORS one nine eight point eight five seven annexation without election by petition of landowner. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
So move.
Is there a second? All second? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. The hearing is now open. It is six oh five on the nineteenth. We have six annexations into different rural fire protection districts. Uh, twenty-four dash twenty-seven owner is uh Riddy into the Ofer Fire, Ofer Rural Fire Protection District. Twenty-four dash thirty-five owner is Hayes into the Ofer uh Rural Fire Protection District, and uh twenty-four dash thirty-six owner is Costa into the Gold Beach Wetterburn Rural Fire Protection District. And twenty-four dash thirty-seven owner is Veric into the Cedar Valley Rural Fire Protection Districts. Do any of these owners wish to speak? Hearing no comments. Do we have any other public comments? Hearing no other public comments. Is there a motion?
You ready?
Yes.
Okay, I will move to approve the petition for annexation, BOC annexation number twenty-four dash twenty-seven. Second?
Motion is second, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
I will move to approve petition for annexation, BOC annexation number twenty-four dash thirty-five. Second?
Motion is second, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
I will move to approve the petition for annexation, BOC annexation number twenty-four dash thirty-six. Second?
Motion is second, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
And I'll move to approve the petition for annexation, BOC annexation number twenty-four dash thirty-seven. I'll second that.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. This hearing is now closed, and the time is six oh seven. And next up in the agenda is a public safety update. Lieutenant Crone.
Good evening. Uh, Lieutenant Jeremy Crone, I'm the Jail Commander for Curry County. Um, I just want to comment on a couple of things regarding the jail and the issues that are surrounding the jail. On Wednesday, we had testing for corrections deputy positions. Uh, one applicant showed up for it. Unfortunately, uh, she wasn't able to pass the test at that time. She is studying for it, and she's going to be applying and retesting.
Jeremy, when you say didn't pass the test, can you just kind of explain to the public the type of test to?
It's it's a law enforcement test. It's called the National Post Test. It's a standard test that goes, I mean, every law enforcement agency uses it. It tests math, uh, arith- uh, not arithmetic, sorry, math, reading comprehension, problem solving, report writing, and grammar.
Yep.
Most agencies charge for that test. We do not. So if that's your, if you want to apply for us and you think we're going to charge you for the test, we're not going to, so please apply, and we'll get you tested.
Good blood.
With that, we did receive one letter of resignation. Uh, that's one that we knew was coming. Uh, this individual is going to the Oregon State Police. We wish him the best of luck. He's going to do great wherever he is. Over the last week, I was made aware of several new case laws that have come out that affect training and tactics for um deputies in either the law enforcement side or the corrections side. As a use of force instructor for our agency, it concerns me that those case laws came out the way that they did. Um, it's going to take an enormous amount of remedial training to undo some of the training that we've done in the past. Um, one of them is surrounding compressional asphyxiation, and what that is, it's basically, yeah, just like Commissioner Trose says, you're.
You can't lay on them.
Can't, you can't lay on them anymore.
Yep.
And that finally came out and said, we can't do that. Unfortunately, a lot of our con- defensive tactics training is
Yeah.
You put your body weight on someone to stop them. So there's going to be a tremendous amount of training that's going to have to go into it. Unfortunately, that's going to mean overtime, it's going to be training costs. I'm probably not going to be able to do it myself, so I'm going to have to find someone who's willing to come down here for free, because I don't necessarily have the training budget to do this. The, uh, I'm not going to comment on any of that. I am, I am worried that we're getting into a situation with the jail specifically that our staffing levels are not, I've said it numerous times, but now it's starting to come to fruition. And um, the Sheriff and I learned of this meeting tomorrow um by Facebook. So that was a little concerning to us. Uh, this morning, I'm, I'm here on a vacation day, because I'm over on my vacation hours, so I'm going to have to burn time anyway. Um, but it's important that this is out here, that.
Hold on.
Sure.
You're, you're talking about the meeting in Coues tomorrow?
Yeah, the meeting in Coues tomorrow.
I was under the understanding that the Coues County Sheriff came down.
I was under the understanding that the Coues County Sheriff came down here and met with our sheriff, is that incorrect?
He did come down and meet with him. At that point, we were not invited to that meeting.
I was, oh, well, I was relayed information from the Coues County Commissioner.
Sure.
Said that, that he was...
I'm confused. What do you mean you weren't invited to the meeting?
He was, we were, we were just told the meeting was happening and we asked if we could come up there and we...
You mean the workshop?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I was told that the Coues County Sheriff invited, the sheriff said he wasn't going to attend, but he would be sending you?
That may have happened, I haven't been able to see that.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was, understood that...
This morning, I received several phone calls regarding the, what was posted on Facebook from the Coues County Commissioners. A lot of agencies were concerned about that with our jail and that's why I am going to make a point to go up there and be available for that.
Good.
The, the biggest thing with our jail is it has been neglected for years. And our maintenance is, it's not the maintenance department's fault, so I don't want that getting out there. But because of the budgeting issues that we've had, things have been kind of pushed to the side and now it's starting to come up as an issue. Right now, I have an entire housing unit that doesn't have anybody in it that I would love to get maintenance in there to do things for, but they are spread so thin doing other things and other priorities for the county that I can't get them in there to do it. I have staff that are willing to go in there and do maintenance on it, but that's not their job. And I hate saying that, but they're not skilled in that like our maintenance team is. That creates liability and I don't want to put my staff in it, I don't want to put the county in that position.
Wait, when you had, when we had talked about some maintenance issues before, you know, my, my plan was to get, you know, get me the list and we'll, we'll, you know, if we get it spec'd, then we'll put it out to bid and see what we can do. That's what, that's the only way we're going to address these things.
I provided that list to maintenance.
You need to provide it to me.
Okay.
Because maintenance, you, you already described accurately what maintenance does.
Correct.
They don't do that.
Correct.
There's, the jail is in major disrepair and we need to get in there and we need to, and we need to treat it like a construction project. And we, you know, we don't have the staffing for it, but there are people out here, we got people that we can hire. So that would be working with me.
I, I will provide you that list as well.
Okay.
With that, I have received several requests for training that I'm trying to accommodate for our staff. There's, like I said, there's training that we can't accommodate here because of our staffing level, so they need to go outside the agency. If at all possible, if I could have current financials monthly, that would tremendously help me in approving training. Law enforcement training fills up very quickly, so oftentimes when I find out that I have enough money in the budget to do it, it's already full. So if that is something that can be accommodated through finance, I would appreciate that.
And I'm waiting on a few things Ted knows.
Okay.
We talked about it, so...
Sure.
It's going to be good for every department as well, that's what...
Other than that, the jails function, you know, as well as we can. We have a significant trial that's coming up, I think I mentioned that last time. That's a staffing issue that we're going to have. I'm really hoping to be able to hire people quickly enough. The next academy date that we're going to be able to send people to is going to be the end of March.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Where do we, where, what are our resources that we're using for recruitment? Where are we posting our recruitments out, other than Curry County's, you know...
Yeah.
Job site board or whatever? Are we using community colleges? Are we going to the Oregon Board pages? Are we...
So I asked Natasha some of those questions and she was very helpful. She had mentioned that her Indeed posts got taken down and there were some issues with that. Right now, we have, it, it should be posted, I have not checked it in the last week or so because I was out of town. Should be posted on the Oregon Leads website and then it's posted on our county website and really word of mouth. Unfortunately, we just don't have the resources in our office to go out and do a big recruiting push and things like that.
Yeah, as HR can, can, there's other resources that are available to HR departments that will really can help us broaden our, our reach to job postings. Some of them are free, so I'll work with Natasha and we'll start...
A little bit of expense on advertising is going to go a long way to get them out of the, of the overtime.
Yeah, and you know, if HR can buy a subscription, you know, pay out of our budget for a subscription to some sort of, there's different sites, I can think of a couple off the top that, that really have the reaches to send them out to different places. That really would be a, an expense that was well worth its weight to be able to reach outside of our, our current pool that we're pulling from, so.
As long as we're on that topic. Another issue that we have, we have discovered in this mass accumulation of applications is the current county application is really good for county employee, employment. It's not so good for law enforcement employment. There are steps that have to be taken prior to the interview and the testing, such as criminal history checks. There's not enough information on that application for us to do that. We have to verify their age, which in most circumstances, lawfully, you can't do that. In law enforcement, you can. So we need, if we can work together...
Absolutely, I think that's another thing that, Lieutenant Crone and I have spoke about this before. Really, there are two different needs.
Yes.
Law enforcement and general services are, are two entirely different beasts when it comes to recruitments and what can and cannot be asked. So I definitely think that we need to look into creating a law enforcement application separate from the counties, if, if you guys are okay with us moving forward with that. I think that would be...
Yeah, of course.
And, and if you guys are also okay with it, another thing, and forgive me, Kena, because I was not able to get ahold of you in the beginning of the week, so I talked to Natasha.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
The other thing that we're finding is people don't know what the automatic disqualifiers are for law enforcement. So I would like to work with HR to have a poster or something on our website that if you check these boxes, don't even apply.
Yeah, makes sense.
Here, Felton.
The last thing I would like to talk about, and this is, I'm open for the conversation. Last meeting, I informed everyone that we were awarded a grant for $331,000. On Monday, I got the final approval, they were just waiting on the contract. There's some issues in Salem with uploading the contract, I think AP also got the same email. There was going to be some issues with the contract and they had to do some DocuSign stuff. I was really hoping tonight that we were going to be able to discuss that contract. I thought I provided all the necessary documents. Is there something that's missing? I didn't hear back, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think it, there was, it was incomplete. There were some other, there were some other steps that need to be taken and I think...
Yeah, it was a grant application. And on that grant application, so we got, we received the application.
Sure.
We received your, your certification letters that you sent with it. What we didn't have is the meats, you know, the, the nuts of the, of the contract so we can see what the boxes are that we have to check off in regards to compliance.
Did, did that not get forwarded?
No, it wasn't in that, yeah.
Okay, so I will make sure that's forwarded.
I have it now.
Okay, you do have it.
Is it, is it a time-sensitive approval?
So it's a, it's a time-sensitive approval to the sense that this grant was an emergency grant that was granted. It was put out in the end of October, or sorry, the end of September. Kena and I worked really together to get this moving, worked through the steps. They awarded it in November for funding to go, it's a backwards funding to October.
Reimbursement-based grant.
It's reimbursement-based.
Retroactive too, or something?
It's retroactive to October, but it has to be exhausted by October 2025.
Yeah, actually September 30th of 25, yeah.
Um, there is...
It's an October one, it's a federal fiscal year grant.
Yeah. And there, there are some things in that grant that are going to require recruiting and job descriptions and things like that, so I would like to get that moving as quickly as we can because obviously hiring people is a difficult thing around here. There's also some medication costs in there that we have to expend those costs or there is the option to reallocate as we kind of move through the fiscal year, as long as we're staying within the parameters of the grant. And it also, it'll, it'll also offset our current nursing staff's salary a little bit because they're going to take on some extra duties.
So I guess my question would be, is this, how quickly can we get the information that's necessary to get the, to get it to where we can approve it?
So I got the, I got the actual grant requirements yesterday. I can, I could probably have that reviewed and, and done by tomorrow, just to make sure that we can meet all those, those grant reporting requirements.
Do you want to, do you want to retroactively, you know, add it to the agenda and then, and then approve it conditioned on, on Kena's...
Oversight?
Yeah, oversight and, and completion of that to her satisfaction?
Essentially granting signature authority upon approval.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and the reason...
I think that would be fine.
For clarification, the reason for the signature authority to the sheriff or his designee is because it's a C J C grant specific to the jail. Like you had to be a jail commander or the sheriff to apply for it. He has to be the one or...
Yeah, generally, there's, there's a couple of signatures, right? There's the, the department that's going to be the grantee.
Right.
And then the, the B O C. But what we could do is say that in, that assigning the B O C signature authority to, to Kena so that you can expedite this and, and get it going.
Sounds like you have a motion.
Well, I, what's the grant title?
Sure.
Oh, I can look it up. Unless you have it right there.
You, you might be faster than I am, so, because I have to do it through my phone.
Do we need to do anything as far as going back into the amendment to the agenda?
It is the J M O U D grant.
Say it again?
J M O U D grant.
Okay.
And for more, the beauty of this grant is we, in this report that Keno has, it outlines all the counties that did not apply for the grant and those funds will be made available in March. So it is my intention to reapply for...
Good.
Available funds that are left to continue this.
Get all available funds you can.
That is my goal, as long as we keep moving forward on this, so.
Good. Well, I would move to approve the J M O U D grant application and upon, upon review by, by finance and unauthorized signature authority to the Director of County Operations on behalf of the B O C.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, motion is second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys adding that to that. And then, Kena, if you would just reach out to me tomorrow, I'll be, I will be available because I will be heading up to Coues County, so.
I'll be there too.
Oh, perfect. So other than that, that's...
And I just want to comment on the, on the workshop tomorrow. So I, I don't know what the, I have no idea what they are proposing or what it looks like. I know there's, there's a lot of questions, right? I mean, a ton of questions about all of this. I know the district attorney's office has questions, their district attorney's office has questions. But this is, was, it was related to me that this is a informational workshop. Exploratory would probably be a better word. I know I'm going, Patrick's going, Kena's going, you're, are you going, Jay?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jay's going. So again, it's, it's of an exploratory nature. We were informed that the Coues County Sheriff, I talked to Curry County Sheriff, so everything was above board, everybody knew what was going on.
And can I provide a little context?
I would, I would appreciate some, I, I just want to, if you don't mind.
Yeah, the, the context is, so at our District 4 A O C meeting, I had brought up that the Coues and Curry face very similar scenarios and hence the closing of their jail. But besides that, at the time, the discussion was, the discussion was based around the fact that, that we're going to both have to get really creative to be able to provide service to our communities. And a discussion, we, I said, we need to look at avenues where we can co-op resources to maximize our ability to provide service. And some of the things that came out of that was like, you know, we, we both can't afford a grant writer, but maybe together we could.
Sure.
We both, you know, maybe it's, maybe there's a centralized planner and then we have planning staff in each, in each county. Looking at avenues to where we can, can, we can work together to provide good service. And so that was the context of the discussion. And I think what, what resulted from that was Commissioner Taylor saying, hey, can we have a discussion about jail? And so it's like, well, let's explore what we got. And, you know, there's, there's a massive amount of questions. I mean logistical questions that we can't even comprehend, you know, go, you know, there's giant, I mean, yes, there's, this, it's a very difficult conversation to have.
I have a whole binder that is...
Yeah. And I believe that Sheriff Bishop explored this in the past with Coues. And don't, don't, don't forget, like, when we had a 50-bed jail circa 2013, we were providing beds to Coues on a per day, on a per day rate. And I think we had a, we had a guaranteed 20, something of that nature back then?
Something.
It was really close. So we were doing the opposite of this entire idea. So, yeah, it's a, it's, it's extremely exploratory in nature. We haven't even, they haven't even identified what the number would be. So, I mean, that's how exploratory it is.
But also just being flexible, some of the things we've talked about tonight. So if you want to fix the jail and you want to do it in an affordable way, you need to have no prisoners in it. You need to be able to, you need to be able to, you need to be able to basically tear down the wall, go in, gut that place and then, and, and...
And that might be a temporary, and we can work out some of the logistical things.
Maybe, maybe that's an option. If, if, if we don't have, and I just don't see an extra $100 million laying around, so, so we might, we might need to come up with five or six million to make that happen. And, and, but the way that you do that efficiently is that you work with, with partners and we get, we, and we, we get in and out and get it done, so.
And that, and that's one of the reasons why, like, right now with the low numbers that we have in our jail.
Right.
Now's a perfect time.
Right, exactly.
Start tearing apart dorms, do what we got to do and, you know, really dive into the projects.
And if we, if we have, if we have to, if we have to keep it tenanted, right? So this is the time.
Yes, yeah. I, I think, well, I, I do appreciate the context because there were a ton of questions and you heard it tonight, a lot of the questions. I think where a lot of the questions came from, I'll be honest, is Facebook because the post that came out was pretty pointed at how do we keep our jail open and trim your budget and...
Well, and that's my, that's my, that's my point about social media. It's exactly my point about social media. It's wrong, it's misinformation and it creates division and dissension and we can't have that right now. We can't.
And, and just so you guys are aware, the public in Curry County is aware, logistically, this is a nightmare, that's a nightmare.
Oh, I'm aware, sure.
So just know that...
Don't forget, I ran juvenile and we don't have a juvenile, we don't have a juvenile facility here. We transport every single kid.
I just want to make it very clear, you know, I'm going up there tomorrow, if the sheriff goes up there tomorrow, our stance is this is not a, we're not closing our jail, it's not a tenable option to close our jail and relocate everything up there. The logistics alone will not allow for this to happen, the money alone will not allow for this to happen.
Right. But I'm going to...
You're going open-minded, you're...
But here's the thing, no, no, no.
I'm open to have that conversation if we'd like to have it tonight.
And so, so like, I, I've, I had the conversation with the DA, he has very, several of the same questions and, and so what I would, but here's the other thing, Jeremy, so if we're, Lieutenant Crone, I apologize, if we were looking at doing massive projects, right? And we had a space where we could at least house sentenced inmates, right? Not ones that are on, you know, that are in arraignment and everything else, but sentenced, right? So your long-term ones? If we had a spot where we could put them to minimize, to make the, you know, but the thing is, is we don't, it's all idea until, you know, but...
We can, we can speculate, we...
Correct.
Yeah.
You know...
And then on a temporary basis because we're doing renovations, remodeling, absolutely.
And that might not even be tenable to them.
Yeah.
Because they're like, no, we need something long-term, otherwise we can't...
Because they're like, no, we need something long-term, otherwise we can't afford it. So, the conversations are-
I'm just saying that if we stick with the reality we have, that's going to be the most expensive thing, you know, going in there and individually working on a cell when you're surrounded by a jail population, that's the most inefficient way to get that done.
Yeah.
So, but we work with partners, we figure out how to make this happen, and you go in, you just go in with an open mind and say, what are there possibilities? I don't know if there are, but it's certainly worth looking at.
Absolutely. And, you know, as far as the renovation, as soon as we have things lined up, and, you know, my commitment to you and everyone, I will clear out the area. I can move people around, I can clear out an entire housing unit. So, we can focus on a housing unit.
Yeah, I get it, and I just want to make that as broad as possible, so that when you go in, you can really make every hour count.
I appreciate everything tonight. Kena, I look forward to talking to you tomorrow about that, and we'll start making things better at the jail for people who are suffering from opioid use, so.
Jeremy, what I appreciate is, you've got to understand, Kena and Finance and HR are here to help. We've got to have this back and forth, this, you know, this union. You've got to have unity, and it's started, I think it's good. We can't be at odds with each other. So, thank you for coming and taking the day, you know, this is a good vacation day.
As long as we can continue on with county business, I'm-
Yep.
So, that's what I hope to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the update.
All right. Next up, Director of County Operations update.
I don't have it, I need to report after tonight.
All right. Let's see, elected official update. John, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Any updates?
No, sir.
All right, Jay?
No, enough said was said tonight, I think, but one thing that wasn't said was- John?
Yes.
It's your last night? Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know it's- it is a- you know, to sit up there for four years, I know you had some difficult, you know, there was a lot to navigate, I don't think there was probably a smooth year, maybe last year was a little smoother than most, but, you know, thank you for-
Last year was the IT thing, wasn't it?
But that's something.
It was like the worst year of my life.
But, I mean, we had a- in terms of internal issues, right?
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, no, it was- that was a rough year, but thank you for your service and, you know, it- I know it takes a lot to want to do this, so.
It's been my pleasure.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I just have a couple of emergency management-related things. I want to talk briefly about Everbridge. We had some folks that were not on Everbridge. Everbridge is a system that we use to reach out to people during emergencies. If you are not, if you're watching this and you're not on Everbridge, you can go to our website, go to emergency management portion of it, and there'll be some instructions, or you can reach out to Jeff Hughes, our emergency manager, and he'll help you through that. We did have that tsunami that occurred, and we are talking with Jeff, we are planning some public meetings regarding tsunami preparation and information, and those meetings will be occurring in January. The first one will be at January 6, and that will be at the Chetco Library, that's at 5:30 in the evening. January 7 will be the Curry Public Library, that's at 5:30. Then we'll have one on the 10th out in Port Orford, and that's at 5:30. And then, that's also at the library there, Langlois, same thing, and that's at 5 o'clock. And then, on the 16th, we'll do another one in South County in Harbor, Harbor Fire, and that's at 6 o'clock. That information is in a press release that we put out, I think it was today, but you can go to our website and see that press release for the specific locations and times. But I would encourage the public to attend those meetings and pay attention, try to go, try to attend, and learn more about your tsunami preparation. It's really important, and Jeff will head up those meetings. That's my only update. I did want to say thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you for, we had some very difficult times, and I thank you for your conversations with me, your professionalism, and I absolutely appreciate you putting yourself in a situation where you're serving Curry County, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We do have executive session tonight, so we're not quite done. That's right, Jay, you're earning that money tonight, brother.
So, we wanted to do that.
Yes, go ahead.
So, you talked about tsunami, so I talked to Luke this last week, and he was actually surfing the day of that tsunami.
That's what I heard, yeah.
The best surf day ever, he said?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
So, he- the guy that he's surfing with, he comes in, and Luke's out there and just having a blast, and he looks on shore, and the guy just- so he finally comes in and says, there's a tsunami in 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Of course, the worst that- yeah, it was the best day ever, and anyway.
All right, so now it's on to executive session.
Can I use the restroom?
You can use the restroom. We'll take- let's take just a five-minute break, how about that? Five-minute break.
All right, it's 6:45. The Currie County Board of Commissioners meeting is back in session. We're about to go into executive session. The Currie County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660 (2) (i), which allows the board to meet in executive session to review and evaluate the employee-related performance of the chief executive officer of any public, I'm sorry, anybody, a public officer, employee or staff member who does not request an open hearing. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about the subjects discussed during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room.
Yeah.
We set a trap for you.
All right, we are back from executive session and the time is 7:20. And we are back into our regular meeting. There is no action to be taken. Anything else guys?
No sir.
Okay, nope. All right, then it is 7:21 and I will conclude this meeting.